Okay. Here we go. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to recall to order the Finance Committee meeting for Monday, May first. Uh, not first. Please call us.
Counselor Kane.
Present.
Counselor Warren.
Present.
Counselor Finn.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Doos. Counselor Fars. Counselor Yang.
Here.
Counselor Pritchard.
Present.
Chairman Cole.
Present.
Vidae de Juan.
For the record, this is the meeting law which is pursuant to the open meeting law. Any person may make an audio or a video recording of this public meeting, but may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore liable to subject recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or under perceived by those present and our Dean acknowledged and permissed. So we're here this evening to basically continue the conversation around the proposed $27 million park fund being paid for by Hotel Montel Tax. We're here, I'm going to cover a few topics. Just before the group, we have a hard stop at 7:30. We have our regular council meeting, and the park director is here and is going to take the markets through his breakdown of projects, well, the park director. Paul, yours.
If we could, I'd like, I'm assuming you all have the four or five-page memo and all the spreadsheets and so forth. First of all, last time we met, we talked about the access to the dog park. And I think it was Counselor Finn wanted a little bit more information on just how we got to the number that we put in there for half a million dollars for access. So on the last page of spreadsheets, we can just touch briefly on the dog park driveway. It's, the access road is listed at a half a million dollars and with dog park itself at $250,000, of which the $250,000 is a grant. So what's in the Hotel Montel Tax request here tonight is the $500,000 for the driveway. It's a little bit difficult pricing out a driveway that hasn't been designed yet. So using my best guess, I put numbers to it. And I think that the one item here that could make a big difference up or down is that in my mind, we need a retaining wall about 300 feet long at the back of sidewalk there on Quarry Street in order to be able to fill behind the retaining wall to start getting up that very steep hill. So there's money in there for retaining wall, there's money in there for the design and engineering. We have site grading that would be moving around the existing earth material there. We would have to head with an 1,100-foot driveway, we would have to have some type of drainage on it. My expectation would be that since there are two big retaining bases, retainage basins there, that we just dump the water and add the water into the retainage basins. And then for 1,100 feet, granite curving on both sides, gravel base, pavement, and on the top of the wall, a guard rail to keep people from driving on the edge in the middle of winter. So that's, that's the half million dollars detail for the budget.
As much as I appreciate the response, it's actually Counselor Pritchard that raised this specific issue.
I'm sorry. That's all right.
Which is your name?
We're both happy to.
Straighten that out.
Okay. The other question that was asked, and I'm pretty sure you asked it, was the access through.
Avalon.
Through Avalon. We are looking into that. We have one engineering company that did some site review up there, and they're looking through their paperwork. And I think we've made contact with one of the attorneys who worked on closing up there. And so we're going to meet with him and see just, just what, what the proceed, whether or not we can use their property free and clear. I did find that they had some type of, an agreement that they would have yes or no on what uses went onto the city's 22 acres. But the access is still up to me.
Thank you for looking into that. I appreciate that. Obviously, you know, if we can save some money on having the access come to where the road already exists.
Right.
We really just have to grade and put in the small parking lot for the, the dog park, the, the cost would be significantly less than that stuff.
Significant.
And again, just to rear it, is time on looking into it?
Yes.
Okay. Because they were actually the city's mitigation consultant for the, for the Avalon project. And I spoke to him after I raised that with you, I spoke to the representative who was here, he said, yeah, I recall there being a discussion about that at the time of the permit. So I wasn't alone in thinking that there was some sort of agreement from Avalon that the city could have access there. So look forward to getting kind of a final answer on that, but I appreciate you looking into it.
Fine.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Otherwise, let's just start right at the top of the list and go right down through the citywide park improvements. This is not everything that we could or would do. It's pretty much determined by where the money stopped. So we took pretty much all 52 parks in the city. Quite frankly, we divided them up by all the different wards therein and looked at, looked at them ward by ward. We looked at within each ward and within the city as a whole on what our priorities would be as a park department. What we felt needed the most work or the most attention, or was the most benefit to us and consequently to the citizens of Quincy. Starting right with Brill Field. Brill Field, you know, could use other things, but at this point right now, the guard rail between the city parking lot and the field has started to rot away and there's sections missing. So right off the bat, we want to put a new guard rail there to keep people from driving on the field. The Broad Meadows School. There are two tennis and two basketball courts there. The tennis courts are used for phys ed and by people, you know, playing recreationally. The two basketball courts are on the end of the parking lot, and they're used by the kids at recess. These courts are just, they've been plowed over the years. The fences are damaged, so we have in here a complete renovation of these four courts. That would be new paving, new fencing, new color coating. And I will, yeah, and guard rail to protect the courts from the parking lot. The next item is the Fox and Field Track. Like to restrike the track before the markings get any fainter. The soils in the field still hold some water after a heavy rain. We'd like to put some soil amendments into that field to make the drain, to make the soil drain better. The underground electric from the electric service to the start-finish line for the timing system was never installed into the original contract. We didn't have money for that, so we would install that underground electric now. And Mr. Hennessy has been very adamant about his need for a building to store his track equipment in and, and a small office. So that would get us at $200,000, approximately 1,000 square feet of garage storage, so that he could put his mats in in the winter, he could put his hurdles in, his starting blocks, all that stuff right now is using two storage containers down there.
Paul, what's the typical sequence of restriping that track? I know it gets a lot of use. Been down there a few times myself and noticed that, you know, it is being used, just kind of curious from a maintenance perspective, but what's the unkey?
What we would expect it, would, so would we expect it to last? Right now, it's certainly visible. You can see the lines, you can see the, you know, all of the markings. So in that sense, it's not an absolute must. I just have a thing about bright lines. And so I would normally expect these 10 years out of the lines, and I think we're probably four or five years now. It's not a big ticket item, but it would, I think it would just make, you know, make the track pop, not only for the users, but people driving by would look over there and see the brighter lines, and it would, it would just make the whole complex much more attractive.
The thought of the lighting, obviously, is to increase the usability of the underground electric.
The underground electric is more for track infrastructure. For example, at, at the start-finish line, we do not have the, the, the timing system that, you know, goes with the starting guide. We have conduit there between the start line and the finish line. We have the boxes there to plug into at the finish line, but we don't have the electricity coming in from Russell Park that would need to run the length of the track.
So that was never physically installed?
Never physically installed. We didn't have the money when we built the track.
But they ran the conduit?
We ran, yes, we ran the conduit.
And you, yeah, you were actually involved with that, and you are in the field, right?
Yes. Correct. Okay. The next item is LeBret Field, the parking lot's improvement. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Counselor DeVall.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just looking for the bathrooms. Can you elaborate a little bit? Were those the permanent bathrooms or what?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they would, the bathrooms office and storage space would be in the tracks, it would be probably, almost certainly, a cement block building.
Okay. Is it similar to the Page and Field one? Or?
Bigger.
Bigger?
Bigger.
And do you know what a nail?
Page and Field building is 20 by 40. This building would be 25 by 40. No, it would be 40 by 50, 2,000 square feet. It's 1,000 square feet at $200 a square foot. So it would be 20 by 50, 30 by 35, 40 by 25, something, something along that, you know, rough dimension, 1,000 square feet. And most of it would be, like I said, just bare storage with a small office for the track coaches, and then men's and ladies'.
And then plumbing and install to that too as well?
Yes. Yes, everything, that would be the complete house.
Counselor, thank you.
Is that the same manufacturer that you use down the Fort River?
No.
All right.
We would stick build this.
Stick build?
Yeah, we hire a mason and have him come in and, and stick build it.
Not to derail the conversation, but how is that bathroom down the Fort River coming? Has it been manufactured?
The contractor is, the builder is scrambling to get it out of his yard, but we don't dare drive it across the field because it weighs so much. So we can just wait until the time would be hard enough to drive 100,000 pounds over across the field to get to that location. Because it's too big.
No, I understand. Pretty safe to say that won't, will not happen this year, right? It's starting to get warmer, so.
I, I would have guessed that, that, you know, it would have happened by now, but we've had, you know.
No, you can't control what happens.
We get pouring rain, two decent days, just as it starts to dry out, it rains again. So typical New England spring, but, you know, usually we get sun damage.
I only ask because, as you know, folks ask me.
Yes.
So when I get asked that question, if you were me, your response would be possibly next year?
Possibly by the end of May.
End of May?
I would hope.
Okay. Providing ground?
Yes. Yep.
But where is it?
I mean, we drove, we drove heavy, heavy equipment in there last spring, big excavators that would have weighed about what the building did. We drove the tractor trailers right across the field and had no problem at all. But it was, last year was a dry spring and a dry summer, so it really wasn't a problem.
No, believe it or not, you know how I put that project, right? So anyways, any further questions on the tax and the back, just put your hands before me. Okay. Thank you.
Moving on to LeBret Field. Again, there's a kind of an if with this one, if the city purchases, purchases it, the parking lot, then we would expect to be able to do some improvements, repaint it, square it off, make it hold more cars, you know, just make it more conducive to an efficient Russell Park. This is specifically the high school tennis courts at Quincy High School. New fences and tennis nets. The pavement repairs would be, you know, somewhat limited cracks and cracked ceiling and so forth. And then we put, we put a new, two light poles in out of the parking lot that, you know, would have to be cleaned up and repaved. The wooden bleachers there are ancient, and rather than just putting new boards on them, we just assumed by new aluminum state-of-the-art bleachers like we have in a lot of our other fields. Flynn Playground, that's the little playground on South Street, sort of the Indian of Monday That is an undersized court. It's a 40 by 60 court, and normally a basketball court would be 50 by 84, so that the three-point, you can't shoot from the corner outside the three-point line because the three-point line goes out of bounds on there at 6 feet from a corner. This was a court that in 1996, when we did the last court repairs, all we did was put new color coating on it. We just repainted it. We didn't do any paving. We put color coating on the asphalt and put a coat of white paint on the backboards, and that was it. So this would be a complete renovation, rip it out, all the asphalt away, fine grade and pave it, color coat and stripe it, put a fence up to keep the ball from rolling into the street.
Paul, I just want to point out too, and, you know, I think that your overview of Flynn Playground kind of speaks to the level of specificity that was taken, you know, with, with these parks. And Flynn is certainly a playground that's overlooked, but if you go down there on a weekend day, sometimes in the evening, there's a lot of folks down there utilizing the court.
Right.
And, you know, much to your observation, that I'm aware of, there hasn't been investment down, down at that field in quite some time. Having kind of played a little bit there myself, I notice that, I see the fencing in here, which is imperative because, you know, when that ball go, you're rolling, and you chase it for 15 yards.
Yes.
Right? So.
And it's a fairly busy street, so.
A fairly busy street, but it's a really large piece of land as well.
Right.
And that's a pretty big playground, as far as I got, you know, parking the park, for lack of a better word.
Yes.
Would go, so, yeah. So glad to see that.
Raydine Field for Riverfield. This money would complete the master plan that we've been working away at. Right, as of right now, we have the wall dying wood. We are in process for getting the new play structure ordered. We will have the basketball court paved. And what's left in this request would be all the fencing and paving that would clean up the entire outside of the park. So that we'd be, literally every side of the park, we'd be taking people who are parking in the street and either parallel parking them on the edge of the park or turning them and having them angle park into the park so that they're no longer out in the street.
And with that particular project, obviously, because I've been so tied to it for, seems like an eternity.
Yes.
You know, there's a lot of moving parts, and I think that, you know, for the Avalon you were particularly, you know, the thought was always to address the insular effects sometimes that happen when you, when your home and lots of park, right? And I think that, to your point, so re-engineering and reintroducing a new parking element is certainly something, given the very narrow streets down there, that would be welcome. The clerk to my right, he just mentioned what's pickleball, and I know that isn't always, you know, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
I'm not the one to talk about it because I don't understand it myself, but it, it's the hot new craze, and especially for seniors, okay? It's somewhat like platform tennis in that it's played with pretty much a dead ball. It doesn't bounce very much. It's really like a wiffle ball. And, and it's played with a paddle, a solid wood paddle, not a string rack. And the court is quite a bit smaller. I think it's 30 by 40, so that if you can think of the size of a basketball court, three pickleball courts will fit inside a basketball court playing crosswords. So if one starts under one basket, one starts under the other basket, and then one straddles the center line, there's room for three pickleball courts. And they play with a relatively low net. I think it's a two-foot net or maybe 30 inches, but it, it's not a very high net. But you don't have to chase the ball a lot is part of the appeal of it. Even if you smash it, it doesn't go very far, so you don't have to have 12-foot high fences. And Mr. Welch started pickleball in the Senior Olympics, I believe, just two years ago, and he already has 90 players signed up. And we were talking to the rec, the head of the rec department down in Plymouth the other day, and he has a league started, the pickleball league, with something like 15 teams in it already. So there's the man there, and it seems like a good spot, you know, with the, with the clubhouse there, there's lots of exercise classes and so forth happening in there. So it, it's kind of like a secondary senior center, as well as the Ward Two Civic Center. So, you know, that could be a hot pickleball location in Quincy pretty quickly.
And I think I could just briefly elaborate on that. I think you touched on exactly what I was hoping. As you know, and we spoke about it, I have the privilege of representing a very mature population in Ward Two, and we've seen the unbridled successes take place down in Council Harris's district, the Kennedy Center. And, you know, in talks with, with the mayor over the last couple of years, you know, really trying to work and advocate for the implementation of, you know, formalized satellite senior center.
Right.
So it would give folks living up in the Quincy Point section, sections of Ward One and sections of Ward Four, access or entry point to programming that's a little more conveniently located in the neighborhood. So when I see the pickleball, it sounds like it's starting to trend in that direction. And, you know, outside of this, I've been kind of working with some private partnerships to hopefully advance the actual building. So keep our fingers crossed, because anytime, as you know, you get into a construction project or collision on the building, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of things hidden behind the walls that otherwise can't be anticipated. So the hope is to continue the conversation, continue the momentum, and ideally, you know, deliver home a satellite senior center for folks, you know, living up in that section in town. Obviously, I'm delighted to hear, you know, the mayor is a advocate and proponent of such a site. So, you know, it's been great working with people and, you know, nice to see the progress. So just be fired up.
On the top of the next page, Mount Street Beach Design and Permit Growing Facility. That design and permitting process has already been started with some money that was left over from another contract and is pushing forward. We've met with a gentleman from Row USA, USA Rowing, I guess, and it's a Canadian gentleman who goes all over the country designing rowing houses, rowing houses, facilities, and docks and piers and all that type of stuff. And along with the permitting process for getting more docks out into the river, we're working very hard on, on that right now. That's a very active process going forward. Bishop Field. We have upgrades to seven courts down there. We have five tennis courts, a street hockey court, and a basketball court. Right at this moment, we're working on all-new sports lighting that is being paid for with CPC funding. And then the actual improvements to the courts themselves and new planting along the sidewalk and some drainage over in the playground, which stays wet after rain. Those would all be projects that would improve the usability and the aesthetics of Bishop Field. I think if you look at almost any of our courts, what's happened is that over the 21 and 22 years since they were installed, just the incidental banging against the fence as you, you know, hit a ball and then keep running until you use the fence to stop you. Or at some of the baseball fields, the, the coaches play soft toss against the fence, and you'd be surprised after. and you'd be surprised after you hit a baseball into a steel fence about fifty times how much that starts to bow out. And the other thing is we've used black vinyl coated fences on almost all of our courts. We just find that it's a much more attractive appearance. And as that vinyl coating ages and gets more brittle, it starts to crack off. So we see a pipe that is supposed to be black, and it's got a big gap in the middle of it where the coating is gone, and the galvanizing, silver galvanizing comes through. So it is somewhat of an aesthetic thing, but I think that the way our courts generally look, that it's wise to put the money into the fencing as well as into the color coating and striping. Next item is the Wallaston School.
Excuse me, Paul. Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paul, just a quick question on the Bishop Field fences. You were talking about how the fences have been warped because the ball is coming in more than. How old are the fences that are there right now?
We redid all the tennis courts in the city in nineteen ninety-six. So they're twenty-one years.
Okay, and if we put up a new fences, the quality of the old fences, you know, despite how long it's been there, just not being worn, to me, is the metal, you know, to the point that they can't be reshaped? Or is it not cost effective? It may not be done? I'm just thinking too, because to replace them constantly is a problem to make in a shorter period of time. We've tried that for the case again. Have you looked at the option of potentially just going in and repairing that section of the fence? Or is that not considered?
It's pretty much the whole fence. And what it is, I believe, it's actually that the metal is stretched, the wire in the metal, the metal wire, by bouncing, hitting, that the metal actually stretches. So that you might say, well, just push it back. Push it back so it's straight up and down. It just doesn't work. It pops the other direction. And so it's almost impossible. The only thing that I would do at this point that I would have done twenty-one years ago if we'd had the money, would be to put another pipe rail halfway up in the area that's most damaged by people bumping against it and so forth, so that you have extra support instead of just, I mean, the fences are ten feet. We have a bottom rail, a mid-rail, and a top rail. So there's five feet of unsupported fence with five feet above it. And what I've allowed for this time is to add another rail to support that and just to absorb some of that pressure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We buy the heaviest gauge fence available, the heaviest wire.
I don't doubt that. I was making sure that we explored all options before we went to see.
Yes, it can't be fixed. It has to be replaced.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Wallaston School. We have a single basketball court there that the kids use for recess. And from what I understand from Mr. Welch, is they have quite a crowd down there in the evenings as well. So this is another place where the basketball court was originally built on the parking lot. It's just color-coded on the parking lot. And there is, there's no guardrail to protect it from people driving on it. So what I would do would be, in this case, dig it all up, pave it, put a guardrail across the long side and a little bit up to keep people from driving on it, put new hoops, color-code it. And then the last item here is kind of a pet project of mine in that, whenever you knew the parking lot at the Wallaston School, there used to be a line of massive oak trees down the sidewalk in one of the parking lot. And through attrition over the years, those have all been taken down. So what I would like to do here is put all new oak trees inside the fence. So they can't be head by snow plows, they can't be salted on. They would be actually set into the parking lot with raised granite curb around them, much as we've done in some of the traffic islands. So that the sand and salt and so forth, as it goes down on the area that's driven on, can't jump the curb and kill the trees again. So I think that's just a really worthwhile project in restoring that parking lot. Next item is Flaherty Playground. That's across the street from O'Rourke Playground. It's just a small playground with a small play structure in it. And it's sort of one multipurpose court with basketball playing sideways and street hockey playing lengthwise. What happened here in nineteen ninety-six was that we put the cheapest, least expensive Band-Aid fix on this court that we could. We crack sealed it, covered all the cracks with a fabric, and then color-coded everything. And that probably lasted ten years, but we did not put down a new coat of pavement. We didn't grind up the old pavement and start over again. So in some sense, this was a Band-Aid approach in ninety-six, again, because the money only went so far. And so that at this point, that surface is in tough shape, and I take the whole court out. Take out the fence, take out the pavement, repaint it, put new fence in, and give them a brand new board. Next item is Quarry Hills Baseball Lighting. As you know, up on Rashudy Drive, the Quarry Hills Baseball Diamonds and Soccer Field are all in landfill. So that in order to put the lights in there, they have to penetrate the landfill cap, which has proved to be challenging permit-wise and will be somewhat challenging construction method-wise. So the lights themselves have been paid for by the CPC. All the design and permit work up until this point has been paid for by Quincy Youth Baseball. And now we're at the point where we need to put the lights up, dig into the cap, put the bases in, pour concrete around them, put the lights up. And then Local One Oh Three has agreed to do the labor for the light, the conduit, and then installation itself.
Paul, that just sounds like an amazing, you know, evolution of folks sort of working together to advance.
Yes.
So, kudos to everyone that rallied around. I know Quincy Youth Baseball.
They have hung in there, totally hung in there.
Raising private money and just, yeah, doing everything for the kid. I just, listening to you say that, I'm like, wow. It's just, that's just an example of a really good community product.
Right.
Sure. Just wanted to point that out. Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just elaborate a little bit on that. We appropriated that CPC funding last year.
Yes.
And there's three out of the four fields that are still going to get those lights? Or is it, how is it set up out there? What are they looking to do?
As far as I know, it's lighting two of the four fields.
Two of the four fields, okay.
That's the way I understand, yes.
Because I think originally we had three of the four fields we're going to take care of. It would give lighting for that fourth field to use a certain time during the night. So what, two?
As far as I know.
Or is it nowhere?
Yes. It's eight lights. I know it's eight lights, but it would normally be two fields.
And is it by the Quarry Hills soccer field side? Or is it one of them going to be on the adjacent, next to the hockey lot?
I believe.
Of, hockey lot of the baseball, Quarry Hills baseballs. And then there's the soccer field that's on the left-hand side that has two fields on that side. So you're going to be able to light off four fields for the two lights?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so one of them is.
Eight holes to light two fields properly, you know, the light levels that you need to play at.
Okay. Thank you.
The next item is Beechwood North School, installing a basketball court. We've been speaking to the gym visit teacher down there. Right now, the basketball court surface is so old and itted and cracked, it wouldn't even make sense to put stripes on the parking lot. And with all the cars that they have in there, half the time, there are cars parked in the parking lot. So what we would like to do is put a complete new basketball court off the parking lot in the grass with new loops, new color-coded, new pavement and everything. The next item is Adams Walk. We have some masonry repairs to do to the fountain. We would like to replace the lights that are there with LED lights. And we would also like to put some walk lights on the sides of all those walk lights going through the park. Part of it would be for nighttime safety, part of it would be for whoops driving by. There would be eight more headlights, I think, just something that would look nice and glowy. The next item is Coletta, Coletta Field. That's the baseball diamond behind the Adams Walk Fountain. One complaint about that field, oh, we had two complaints about that field. One that it's too short, it's too easy to hit a homerun. The other is the foul balls over the backstop, the foul balls down the third baseline. It's basically kiss the ball goodbye because you'll never find it in the woods. So, you know, in this request, we would like to move the backstop back to give us more room to the homerun fence. We'd like to put some netting above and to the sides of the backstop so that the balls that go back over the backstop would get caught. We're fencing along third base, and then add irrigation. And then I think we're going to do some new lighting at the tennis courts with the seven thousand. The next item is the Coke Park Recreation Complex site improvements. The planting there was fairly old and lunches up and started dying out. So we, last fall, we pulled all of the shrubbery out from around the building. We'd like to replace that shrubbery. The concrete pad up in the middle of the lawn that was the floor of the old mess hall when it was a Nike site is no longer needed. So we would like to dig that up and replace it with a woven seat. We are desperate for more parking in front of the building. So we have a plan in mind to add about eight more parking spaces in front of the building and add some more lighting to the entry road into the park complex. We'd like to put irrigation in the big lawn area and in front of the building. We have some electrical improvements that would actually be part of the lighting issue. And then fence and gate improvements for security. Next item is Cavanagh Field. This is a basketball court that the Boston Celtics donated to the city eighteen years ago, maybe. And it's just so much used down there that all the paint has worn off it. We'd basically like to repaint it with our own color, you know, with the Celtics logo. And just upgrade that so that it's a better court. We commend this number of kids down there. From kids just shooting around in the morning right through the evening hours, as well as some play from Atlantic Middle School. Next item is Welcome Young Field. That is the women's softball field in North Quincy. It just, it's tired again. The courts there get used constantly. We have two basketball courts and two tennis courts. The basketball gets used a lot, the tennis not much, partly because they have severe cracks in them, partly because that can simply be a tennis area. So we'd like to completely redo those four boards and irrigate the women's softball. Last page. Emerson Beach, Walla Park. We need some new fences there, some trail improvement. And we've been talking with the council about just what exactly to do with Emerson Beach for the, add sand, improve the bow, and, you know, just general improvements to the beach and to the park in general.
She recognizes Councilor. Thanks, Paul. Thank you, David, for here at the rank, looking at Emerson Beach. We kind of mentioned about the ramp. Did we discuss that we weren't going to put another ramp there? We were just going to maybe put a set of stairs in that correct because we couldn't fix it?
I don't think Al's talked to me about what was finally decided here. He bounced some things off of me and asked me if we were replacing the fences and some other things, but.
The ramp, the ramp doesn't, just doesn't fit in the way we're, we just need a safe and not that be jumped.
Right.
Get out really, it's a jump that's been.
Yeah, the ramp, the ramp has been a bone of contention to have. Some people wanted, some people don't.
To have, to have it though, to people just trying to get onto the beach.
Yeah.
It'd be nice if you, you know, fix that up or not be here around just maybe a set of stairs so people could go to the beach.
Right.
I think that's what the census said here. So, thank you. Thanks for, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilwoman.
Thank you. I just had a couple of quick questions over that mentality of it. What's the timeline for the work, all the work that's contemplated here?
This work, some of it's fairly straightforward, and so it could be done in this coming fiscal year, even this coming calendar year, the calendar year that we're in. Things like fences and so forth are just, you know, a matter of putting out. Things like fences and so forth are just, you know, a matter of putting out a fence. There's so many lineal feet of ten-foot-high fence, you know, that, things like that. Then you get into projects like the Dog Park or especially Kincaid Park, which we haven't got to yet, but that's a, that's a major design project. And then there would be, you know, putting the, putting the whole project out to bid. So that, you know, there's various types of projects here from the simplest things that the park department could do ourselves, other things that would be done fairly quickly with bids, and then other things that would require, you know, to which the construction documents, blueprints and so forth.
So we're talking about essentially twelve million dollars worth of work, right? Take out the fifteen million of the Hancock, Adams dream. Right.
If you break it down into the individual park projects, oh, you, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. If you break it down to the individual park projects, it's a little bit over six million dollars worth.
Six point one million.
On the citywide, what we did was break it out into the projects that were a million dollars or less and include them in the broader list of projects. The rest of the breakdown is the design company from our own park, the acquisitions piece, and lots of, you got it up here.
So I guess what my question is, is what, if most of the stuff, most of the projects in this six-point-one million is a one-yearish timeline, what's the long-term projection for the parks? And what we're not getting here is essentially what the parks are going to do for infrastructure improvements over the next five years, right? This is everything that would need to be done today that can be implemented over the next year as opposed to, well, we know, you know, just grabbing something out of here. We have some, you know, new fences, new tennis nets, replace old wooden bleachers in Russell Park. So if we're not doing that at other parks, what, at some point in the next five years, that needs to be done.
This was great, for sure, Council. This is framed as a priority list as of right now. Sure, working with the park department, we can flush that out. I'll give a little bit more, give you better detail.
Because it was, I guess from my thinking, I'd like to see the short-term money, the six-point-one million, which is short-term, compared against the long-term needs that we have over a five-year horizon. See how those two play into each other, right? You have to do the same with me in terms of forecasting what the needs for the infrastructure, because that's just the move, I remember talking capital. Although it's not in the capital plan, this is essentially a capital program for the parks, right? So I'd like to see what the capital needs would be over a longer horizon to put this six-point-one million dollars in perspective in terms of the overall, right? Thank you.
Paul, coming down the long stretch, it's seven twenty-seven. We're going to need a couple minutes to sort of transition. We're going to pick this up on the fifteenth, okay? Which, you know, councils will talk through scheduling rules. But I just want to allow folks to sort of transition, if you will. And then we'll have the budget presentation improvements. Certainly appreciate your commentary here this evening and look forward to more on the fifteenth. With that, we'll call this meeting, Finance Committee adjourned at seven twenty-eight. Thank you.